So it is a wonderful day here in the city of Flint. No, not because everything is perfect, but because we have fearless leaders working tirelessly on your behalf. I'm here with the Finance Chair Judy Priestley to discuss last night's meeting, or the lack thereof. Although council members one, two, four, and seven were present to move the city forward, we were unable to establish a quorum. The clerk reached out to each absent council member to attend the meeting, but they have yet to respond. This behavior is not conducive to moving the city forward. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilperson Priestley.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. People of Flint elected us to do their business. That means being present at regularly scheduled council meetings, as well as other special council meetings. Last night, we rescheduled a finance committee and all the other committees. So it was a night that was already set aside for council business. Four members didn't show up. On that agenda was appointing our third ward councilman. According to the charter, we have thirty days to appoint that person. That didn't happen. The residents of the third ward are being underrepresented because we have been unable to appoint that new person, who will serve until a special election is held next year. By failing to come together and follow our rules laid out by the charter, we are failing the people that elected us and put their trust in us. Our differences cannot come before commitments to the city of Flint. The third ward does have a right to hear their, to have their voices heard. That's not being done. The appointment, like I said, has to be in thirty days. The failure of four council members to come to a meeting that is on a day that was previously scheduled and set aside on their calendars to do city business fails the residents of
It is not an option to neglect the business of the city of Flint. Beyond the importance of appointing a new councilperson, we have critical city business that's being neglected. Our colleagues' absence has left key issues unresolved, which affect our residents directly. One of them, for example, is many city hall services. The Northside Payment Center, which accommodates the elderly and the handicap. We're not there to pass the money to keep it open. And so we're in jeopardy of losing that Northside Payment Center. Those were the things that's on the agenda. And that payment center have brought in over a half a million dollars. Next, the impact of city employees. We have city employees that work at that Northside Mini Station. That's affecting the livelihood of city employees that took their time out to work on behalf of the city of Flint. Next, we had different ordinances. One specific ordinance is the housing ordinance. The Fair Chance Housing Ordinance that we've been working on for a couple of years. And this housing ordinance is ensuring that returning citizens have a fair chance to receive housing under Michigan law. We have community benefits agreements. We have zoning ordinances. We have things that are important to the city of Flint. We have organizations that want to bring multimillion-dollar investments to this city. They want to bring hundreds of jobs to this city. And the playing of politics is halting and stunting the growth. Like Councilwoman Priestley said, this was not a separately scheduled meeting on an off day. This scheduled meeting was on a day that we usually conduct the city's business. Furthermore, evoking Robert's Rules that says that we can call every council member that are not here, and so they can come, so we can have a quorum. Unfortunately, no one responded. No one responded to the texts. No one responded to the phone call. No one responded to the voicemails. Therefore, giving the impression that the business of the city of Flint is not of importance. So we want to make sure that the residents, that they reach out to their councilperson, and that they make sure that their councilperson is moving in the best interest of the city, moving in the best interest of them, because that's the only way that we can move the city forward. Now, like Councilwoman Priestley stated, we do have a deadline to appoint someone for the third ward. This is not optional. This is not if we feel like doing it. This is law. This is city law. We can't expect the bad actors to go to speed limit and stop doing donuts in the neighborhood. We can't expect people to stop doing crime and obey our laws if your own lawmakers, if your own lawmakers are above the law and not following the laws of this city. If the lawmakers are not following the laws of the city, why should anyone else? So we demand a level of accountability today, because it's important. And so we have a colleague here that was not here at the meeting, and we will turn the floor over to her to see why she didn't respond and why she was not at the meeting.
It's unfortunate that my colleagues made the choice today to try to pretend like civility mattered. On October the fourteenth, we had an insurrection within our council chambers. For over two hours, we had unruly individuals who violated our disorderly conduct. The president of the Flint City Council refused to enforce. She refused to answer repeated claims for help. We asked for help from the police. We asked for help from whoever we could get. It got so bad to a point to where a resident had to pull out a gun to protect and defend herself and her mother. People were not protected in these chambers, and that is at the fault of the president and the vice president. My other colleagues asked for help and called, "Madam Chair, Madam Chair." She refused to answer. No one should be coming to council chambers to be in fear of their lives, and that's what happened. They took over these chambers. Everyone saw it. There was a death threat on my life, and I take my life seriously. I filed a police report with the Flint Police Department. You can hear on one of the recordings where I called Chief Green saying, "We need some help. You have a mess here. There's nine to twelve people that are here. They have taken it over." They had to cut mics. They took over the lectern podium, whichever word you choose. It was pure chaos, and it was dangerous. Before, in the first meeting in Special Affairs, I went and talked to the one officer that we had, and I told him, "We're going to have some issues. You're going to need to call for help." We had a senior citizen, Gladys Williams, who was threatened and told her, "B, I will beat you, A, shut the F up." She was sitting right there in the front row. She feared for her life and got up. I called to order, point of order, and asked, at that time, chairing the meeting was the Vice President Candace Machette, to please warn her. Violence has no place in any public building, and that day was full of violence and rage. There was a conspiracy to incite a riot. Later, when I looked at video, it was disturbing. When the individuals, the twelve individuals, stated, "Liddell and them are happiest H. I came there to get Tanya. I came there to get Tanya." The video was all over social media. I submitted it to the Flint Police Department. It is not required that we come and put our lives in danger, nor the public's life in danger, nor the city staffers and administrators. In this room that night, people were literally running for their lives. City staffers were running from the back of council chambers to the front. Emily Door, the CFO, the deputy CFO, and a senior citizen whose granddaughter was with her, who could barely walk. These chambers were not safe. Everyone's seen how quickly people are removed from these chambers, like yesterday, for coughing. One person was warned and put out because she was not stationary with the sign. There's no such rule. They're making it up. It's not in our charter. It's not in the council rules. It's not in the Robert's Rules. It's not. And let me address the attendance. My attendance is pretty damn good. My attendance is not a problem. But what I won't do for my family, I want to go home every night, like I want the residents to go home every night, and I want the police to go home every night. He was overwhelmed. He could not control the crowd. The Flint Police could not control the crowd. Therefore, an all-call had to go out. Check with 911. At six thirty-nine, I called for help on my phone. It is a call to 911. There is no unexcused absence that if we're not here, they're just lying. They're lying. There is no if you're tardy, if you late. It is not required that we call in as council members. There's no such rule. And so when they peddle this misinformation, it separates our community. Now, I had a meeting with Ashley Capital, the gentleman Mark Quinby, on Friday for the first time. It was a great meeting. Five hours, almost five hours. We're not disputing that moving the city business is important, but I don't want him in harm's way either. Everyone saw the videos. Now, why isn't the Flint Police Department investigating this conspiracy to incite a riot? Why have none of us been contacted by a detective? Nobody has. I'm not putting my life in harm's way, and I'm not putting the public's life in harm's way. These council chambers were not safe on October the fourteenth, when a riot was incited. And the scary part was, we could not get our council president to do anything. When you lose control of what's happening in our city, you want city business, treat everyone respectfully. That wasn't done. And to have a sixty-five-year-old lady surrounded by nine people, and the only way that her daughter felt that their lives were in imminent danger, that should have never happened. On the first part of our meeting during Special Affairs, I went and spoke to the officer. I knew at that time I was told, "You're on a hit list." I did not leave. I'm licensed to carry, and I carry everywhere I go. I don't want anybody shooting at me, and I don't want them shooting at, and I don't want to have to shoot at them. Until these chambers, and this is investigated, which I've asked the Department of Justice, I have requested from Chief Green to have this sent to the Michigan State Police, so that it can be investigated to where it's impartial. We cannot have like what we had on October the fourteenth. It's embarrassing. Business was not done then because the people who were in charge of the meetings allowed a riot to incur, and it didn't stop. The videos are alarming. Every news station picked them up. And it's unfortunate that my two colleagues decided to try to take a situation that could be so very dangerous and twisted to benefit as if four colleagues did not feel their lives were threatened. That shouldn't be happening. I have not been contacted by a detective or told it's being investigated. I have not. I will not come back to these chambers until they are investigating this case, that they can assure me that my safety is not in jeopardy. That night, I had to have a police officer, "Take me home. Follow me home." I've had threats before, but this is the first time that I've said, "Well, I'm gonna..." They told me, "Ms. Burns, we're taking you home." It wasn't even a choice. City staffers heard these individuals state that they were going to get Tanya Byrne, "Are we gonna get her?" So when we talk about people's lives, I haven't been offered a ride. They have not given me a safety plan. They have not said to me, or my other colleagues who are on this hit list, that we're going to make sure that you can come to and from council chambers safe, and that while you're here, you're going to be safe. No one told us that there was a safety plan put in place. They did not. So why would we come to put our lives back in danger, going to be business as usual? And our last meeting, we had one officer and twelve individuals who, with a mob mentality, with a hit list, on social media, a video that they made stating that Liddell Lewis was happy. It was a sad moment for the city of Flint. It was sad. And I'm disappointed that my colleagues, who didn't even reach out to say, "Are you guys okay?" Because I'm not okay. I'm not okay, and the public shouldn't. These chambers should be sacred, and people should be safe. All evening, people were called retarded. They were called B.I.T.C.H.s, F.U. Gladys Williams, a seventy-year-old senior, was threatened, and not one person was warned and put out. Not one. That has never happened. That is unprecedented. Now, this is disappointing. How do we move forward? I don't know. We're going to move forward first with a public safety plan, which needs to be done. Making sure that council can come do our jobs and make sure we're safe. That's at the bare minimum, that we can be either transported, let us know that there will be X amount of officers. They need to do their jobs. And when you are chairing a meeting, it is your responsibility to put out those who are causing a disturbance. That wasn't done repeatedly, 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 from Councilwoman Pfeiffer, from Councilwoman Jarrett, for Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, and for myself. Because there were different, there was a pocket over here, there was a pocket over there, and there was a large pocket of unruly people over there. Nothing was done. And that should never happen. Now, however they choose to spin this, the truth is in the video. You can't change the video. You can't change the 911 calls. Check the 911 calls and see what people were saying, and how many came in. One officer with a mob of twelve, and none of them have been issued a warrant. Now, what we talk about on September the twenty-third, they strengthened our disorderly conduct. Some of the things that they strengthened it, I felt it was subjective, and they voted. The five who normally voted together, I felt it needed some more work. One was Section A, disorderly conduct person, any person who does, if they find is guilty of a misdemeanor. Section one, engages in any fight in a public place, suffer when or in a defense or self of an individual. Number three, conducts himself in any public place or joins with one or more persons in a public place, and he or she knows that singly or together with others from whom he has joined and unreasonably, and obstructing the free and uninterrupted passage of the public or in the public. You couldn't get up and down our aisles. You see it. They took over the microphones. All this happened, and the president of Flint City Council said nothing. I can keep going. Persist. Number four, persist in disturbing the public in peace and quiet by loud aggressive conduct after having clearly been informed by the persons affected. They did nothing. They took over this microphone I'm speaking on right now. Number five, persist in disturbing the peace in disorderly conduct. It was disturbed. We couldn't even conduct the meeting. At six twenty-eight, I believe, the president of council had to hit the gavel to state that this meeting was over, because there was no order. And I can keep going. Number seven, knowingly harass any person which is defined. I gave each of you a copy of it, and then it goes on to the back. These are our instances that should be and are punishable by the law. These are just our ordinances. And then let's go to the state law. You cannot threaten an elected official. It's on video. When there is, "I'm going to get Tanya Byrne, I'm going to get Jerry Winfrey Carter, I'm going to get them." And then when we have a council member to gaslight a family who was grieving, that shouldn't have been done. And that family was grieving, and their grief was taken advantage of. They strengthened this. It's going to be enforced, and until they enforce this disorderly conduct, I will not be here. My ward supports me in making sure I'm safe, that the community is safe, because I show up to do the work. I don't care how many hours that I have to put in, but the one thing they have assured me, my life should not be at stake for doing my elected duty. Thank you.
I do want to approach the lectern again, just to speak on that day. That day, when Councilwoman Machette was chairing, Councilwoman Byrne, she was the first one to appeal the ruling of the chair when she brought someone to order. We have a series of tapes, and I'm glad that she mentioned videotape, because we have the videotape whenever we bring someone to order. Councilwoman Burns would appeal the ruling of the chair when we're bringing order to this chamber. And so all of these things are on tape. And I stood here with my former colleague Eva Worthing, and I did a press conference almost a year to the day talking about how I don't feel safe in these chambers, how I've received threats. The councilperson that's finished speaking, she brought a stranger to my home, and this stranger, they have a restraining order against the Chicago Police.
We were respectful of you. Please be honest. I'm not talking to you.
And as you all see, we let her speak, and she continues to disrupt. That's not moving the business forward. That's not civility. Whenever you speak on the truth, we get interrupted. And so she brought this gentleman to my home, making my child afraid to come home. And the order that she spoke about, not one did she offer an amendment, they continued to vote down the safety members of the, excuse me, the safety of the council members.
You did a call. We couldn't discuss it. So tell the truth. There was no pressure on that vote.
We had that ordinance come before us several times, and those several times, the same colleagues voted it down that are in fear of their life. Almost a year ago to the day, we had a similar insurrection per se. However, all attacks were geared towards us. No one said anything. They just sat in their seats. It was a scary time for me, and I know that people ask me, "Why do you continue to come? Do you fear for your life?" And my colleagues were making fun of me because someone that lives out of town and comes to the meeting threatened me, told me not to show up for work, and they know where I live. Seeing that a colleague would take the person to my house, that's when I began to receive police escorts. And then we had the councilman in the eighth ward state that he refused to vote for the approval of the city budget as long as I'm getting rides. I support Councilwoman Burns getting rides if she has threats on her life, but they were mocking me and making fun of me, and we have this on videotape from our elected seats. That night in question, only thing I can do is call people to order. And when I reached out to call people, "Let's go ahead and just say exactly what it is." The council candidate, Beverly Biggs Levy, her daughter pulled out a gun. We have a picture where no one, no one was threatening her life. People had their backs turned, and she was brandishing a weapon in these chambers. It's a problem that she was allowed to come to the chambers yesterday. So I am in full agreement with you with that safety plan, because no one that brandishes a weapon should be allowed. No one should be allowed to carry a... Do you all see what I'm talking about? The council president is speaking, and so this is what happens at council. I'm not going to make this anything less than what it's intended to be. The city elected nine individuals to serve nine wards. Unfortunately, we had the untimely death of a third ward member. If colleagues are afraid to come to the chambers, which they set the tone for, let's have. Let's have them come here, cast their vote, so the third ward can have a voice, and then they can go back home until they feel safe. Because again, I was told to suck it up, buttercup. I was told that if I'm scared, I shouldn't be in this position. I show up, death threats and all. So I hope that we can see past the back and forth, and we can get to the business. We have millions of dollars coming into this city, hundreds of jobs on the line. We have someone that needs to fill that spot, and to carry on what Councilwoman Murphy would say, "Get the business of the city done." I know he's rolling over in his grave seeing that his ward is being neglected. They have no one to call when they have an issue. They have no one. And so hopefully, this will be resolved. I encourage, I encourage the constituents, reach out to your councilperson. Let them know if you're pleased or displeased with what's going on. I encourage the residents, reach out to the chief of police about enforcing the disorderly person city code subsection with states. If you are disorderly, you will get a warning. If you persist to be disorderly, you will be removed from the meeting. And violators, you can be arrested if you persist to be disorderly. When we have that kind of enforcement in these chambers, we can give these chambers back to their residents. But I want to encourage everyone, go back, take a look at the video. I will share what I have with the media, so you all will see, this didn't happen overnight. This type of behavior is supported and endorsed by certain council people. And unfortunately, it came to a nasty head, and leadership couldn't do anything. I'm not deputized to arrest anyone. Only thing I can do is call on those that are. And they were already dispatched when Beverly Biggs Levy family member went and said something to the Murphy family, and then when Beverly Biggs Levy's daughter pulled out that firearm. That's not my job. So we want to make sure we do our job as legislators, and the police do their job as police, because that's what we were hired and elected for.
When I was elected, I said I could get along with everybody, and I found out that was not true. There are people on this council that I cannot trust. You cannot speak to them, because whatever you say to them in private gets blabbed over a podcast that has a nationwide audience. Gaslighting? Yeah, there's gaslighting on this council, but it's not from us. It's from other members. Podcast after podcast railing against the councilmembers who are the Fab Five, or who wore the Fab Five since one is gone. I have had death threats. I also have a CPL, and I carry. I am deeply disturbed by the animosity that... I have had death threats. I also have a CPL, and I carry. I am deeply disturbed by the animosity that is shown on this council towards each other. We are colleagues. We're supposed to work together for the betterment of the city, and I haven't seen that. I haven't seen, I've seen some residents, some colleagues, vote to not move the city forward, vote against Ashley Capital, bringing almost, well, their next investment is over almost two-hundred million dollars, plus jobs. They've already opened. One employer is already there. They expect to employ sixty people, and they are paying taxes, increasing. And ninety-five percent of those people live in the city, something that people on this council wanted. So when we're talking gaslighting, please consider the source. Thank you. We can answer questions.
What exact day do you have to fulfill the third ward's...
The twenty-ninth, by midnight.
Isn't there enough time between now and the twenty-ninth to have a public safety plan in place where there would be sufficient officers here in the chamber, so that on the twenty-first or twenty-ninth, you could vote?
There were five officers here last night, and if councilmembers had reached out, they would have found out that that was the plan. They did not. Also, that night, one of our officers, our regular officers, was here at the beginning, and he had a grandparent die, and he left to go to his family, like anybody else would.
Have you sent the plan to the other councilmembers?
I don't have a plan.
We were not reached out to. And I did reach out.
Isn't that a simple way of handling this? So tell them and then put the point.
Go ahead. You.
So let's be clear. As we speak about the presence of the body, this is the first time I've ever heard anything about this plan. I have not. And when, and if our colleagues would have answered the call of the clerk when she called them, if they would have expressed that, then we would know. But again, we have this colleague who stated on record, "I don't even talk to you. I don't deal with you." So it's hard to communicate and move forward for the best interest of the residents if the person in question is stating that they don't deal with me and they won't talk to me. And so, and so we're looking for, so now that we know that that's the case, I'm looking forward to reaching out to Chief Green so we can come up with a plan, because again, things been this tense for quite some time. It just hit a head with the gun. We had a woman get strong-armed in the back. We had people get threatened. We had people get threatened, I called Moose, Arthur Woodson told me he was going to beat my A. Councilman Pfeiffer jumped, lunged at me like he was going to hit me. But we never had a concrete plan, we never had a gun pulled. So you are absolutely correct. We do need that plan. And I will work with the chief so we can get that done.
By the, before the 29th?
Before the 29th, absolutely, now that we know. Okay, so...
I would like to respond to that. Can I have the lectern, please?
Well, no, time is of the essence, so, what time is it?
So I do want to say this. I filed a police report. I did the work. I'm only, I can only do so much, and so did my colleagues. I don't know if they're going to be giving statements or not, but the safety of all of them in the pub, first the public. I knew at half, during, after special affairs, that there was a death threat. I did not leave because I want the public to be safe. I talked to the one officer and told him to get help. There were several calls that went out, even an all-call. I was not contacted to the clerk until after the meeting started. This should have been done before. I was not contacted. I made it very clear when I spoke to Chief Green. You can even hear on the video when I end up, I called him, called him twice. He even stayed the last time, "I'm on my way." By then, there were officers flying across the front lawn of City Hall. And it was a scary situation. We were not contacting, it's during the meeting. This should have been before to make sure. Now, yesterday, people were put out of this meeting, and they were put out of this meeting, and no one was put out of the meeting on the 14th. You had three people that were put out and another eight that were warned. Nothing happened with that meeting for over two hours. Over two hours, we were held hostage with this meeting. And that was a scary situation. When I understood very clearly, I was the number one target of these individuals. And it was not of Beverly Biggs Levy. It was not. It was of the grieving family. I said nothing to incite them, to gaslight them, nothing at all. And as a matter of fact, there was a involved dads, which him and I, was the last resolution we had been working on to give them $36,000 to make sure we could move those funds over. Now, you, we, yeah, I was Judy, I went back and, see, this is what I'm talking about. And I don't want to do the tit for tat, because what I'm saying is, the truth will show you, and I was, I worked with Emily Dorr on that, and I went and talked to the deputy CFO, absolutely.
So, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, our lives, if they want to protect the public, and this is the thing, in that stairwell was city staffers who were scared. Emily Dorr, the deputy CFO, the CFO, a senior citizen, her granddaughter, you're talking while I'm talking, that shouldn't have happened. And without a plan for the public to be safe, without a plan for the staff to be safe, and for the councilmembers, we were not told of any of these things. We were called, but we're going to get a briefing during the meeting over a phone call? Why did they only give it to four people? We all should have been given this information, and it was not given. So I'm coming, I'll be back when, get a safety plan. I want my case to be investigated. It has not been given to a detective, because that elected official is against the law to be threatened your life, period.
What would make you feel safe enough to return back to council?
Number one, the case needs to be investig, see, this is, I'm not here for this, I don't have to like you to do the work. I show up to do the work. My part is, number one, have a safety plan. The people in yesterday's meeting, when I watched it this morning, and by the way, I have a mother who has had four strokes. The clerk knows that often if I can't make it, she has four strokes cancer and cannot walk right now. That's where I was at. I'm not going to risk my life, and I have an ailing mother, I'm not going to do that. What will make me feel safe? Number one, investigate. I want the Michigan State Police or the Sheriff's Department to take this case. I want them to issue warrants for the 12 individuals who incited a riot. It was conspiracy to incite a riot. The troubling part was those individuals kept just talking, and you'll see on the video, with the president of the Flint City Council. That was disturbing. I want it to be investigated, I want to make sure that my colleagues and myself, if she's threatened, she's got, let her get a ride. Make sure that all of our lives to and from and during council chambers is safe, so we can do the business. You cannot do the business if you are threatened, and I felt my life was threatened. And so did the other colleagues. That needs to be done. Then we need to make sure we treat every individual that coughs, talks loud, talks out, that they're put out. Those 12 people talked out all through the meeting, they were never warned. What happened was the president and the vice president failed to enforce the disorderly conduct that was passed on September the 23rd. That's about 11 of 12 offenses in there. It was not enforced, they refused to enforce it, because there was a conspiracy to incite a riot. That is the truth.
I would like to ask you one question as well.
Not wrong. But I just want to be clear that any member on council can bring anyone in the audience to order at any time, that's within our rules. And so, and so whenever anyone is yelling out, you'll see on video several times, I pleaded with my colleagues to please, as you see people are yelling out, as you see people are being disorderly, as you see that, call them to order. It's on video, so please go ahead.
So, you know, Councilwoman Burns has said that, you know, in some of these videos online that, you know, you were happy about what happened on October 14th. Can you respond to that?
Absolutely, absolutely not. Why would I be happy that someone is mocking a deceased family members, a family, you know, at least, excuse me. Why would I be happy that someone is mocking a deceased councilmember's family? Why would I be happy at that? Why would I be happy that someone is pulling out a firearm? Why would I be happy? Not at all. Now, what it is, is that these are the people's chambers, and this is where people come to this lectern, where they come to speak. Everyone in the city of Flint that can come here and speak. Ms. Burns, she brought her family here to cuss me out and to tell me off and to be disorderly. They did that. She didn't have anything to say then. But yes, if they're members of this community, they have the right to come here and speak respectfully at the lectern. That's my position and will always be my position. I invite everyone, under the sound of my voice, that wants to come here and speak out about issues in this city, to come here and do it in a peaceful manner. And so I never condone violence. Why would I condone violence when again, I was at the same spot a year ago talking about, "I don't feel safe." And you can see that online. Tom Travis, he did the story. And so, you know, she was on the phone with Aoni Gilchrist, I guess telling her what to say. But we need people that are going to be serious about the city that they serve. That public, that public safety plan, I saw it. That public, that public safety plan, that public safety plan is, that public safety plan, that public safety plan is something that we can do. And so, when we get that together, we're going to see, on October the 29th, at 5 o'clock, we're going to see if our colleagues have the political will to come to these chambers to conduct the business of the city, so we can bring jobs, so we can pass ordinances, so we can do what we're elected to do. Again, I'm willing to work with all of my colleagues. They stated on record that they will not work with me.
I never stated that, no.
She stated, she's... She stated, we have it on tape, if you all would like to see it, it's on tape. She stated, "I don't even, I don't even deal with you." And this...
Please be respectful.
Again. Again, see, this is what happens when, when they invite themselves to the press conference, but not, but not to the, to the meeting. This is what sets the tone for the people that flock to this kind of behavior. The people that endorse this behavior are the people that don't get a warning. And so we're trying to cut this behavior that is not conducive to the residents. I'm willing to work with any and everyone, so we can make this city the city that it could be.
Can I respond to that, because you did ask me the question? Can I have the lectern?
But, did you...
Yes, thank you.
And she did ask me.
Anyone that would like to respond?
I would like to respond to that.
Yeah, so she didn't respond, she responded.
You know, in regards to a safety plan, we have not been invited with, to discuss that with this chief, but that will happen. And we have multiple times asked our colleagues to work with us. I was told by one colleague to lose the number. So, and would you like to see the text? So... I don't want, this is the kind of behavior that we can't have. This is the kind of behavior that we cannot have. This is why we have had more special meetings than any other council combined, to deal with unfinished business. Everyone wants to be safe in this chambers, but you know what? Residents don't want to come down here. Because of the chaos and the encouragement and the derogatory comments made to councilmembers. People standing up here talking about people's bras, diapers, calling somebody a pedophile, playing with little boys. That's the kind of tone that has been set inside of these chambers. Personal things. We should be talking about what happens in the city and stuff that we can act on. I had a resident come to talk about two problem houses in my neighborhood, my personal neighborhood that I've been working on. And she wanted to bring the problems that I've had dealing with these issues to the rest of the council. She left right away, she didn't feel safe. She didn't feel safe. People walking around carrying signs shaking them saying "Poppycock." Those are encouraged by members of our council. That's what I have a problem with. And you know what, this is getting into too personal, this is supposed to be about the business of the city.
Well, I do want to answer the question in regards to...
Yep, we're going to wrap it up.
Now, when they're done, I'm going to finish.
And so, we call it...
So what I do want to say is, will I work with, number one, will...
Again, a disrespect for leadership. Just like, just like she did, just like she did not make the meeting.
She's not allowing me to speak.
Just like she did not make the meeting, Councilwoman Priestley and I called for this press conference. And so, we just want to know, is there any other questions that you all may have for us as we depart, because I have to go and get my son?
Well, you can leave, I need to let them when you leave.
Again, thank you. October the 29th at 5 o'clock. And hopefully, we will have, not hopefully, we shall have a safety plan in place. And hopefully, we have colleagues that have the political wherewithal to come, so we can elect someone to represent the third ward. Mr. Fong? All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I do want to say, because of your question, this is why, and I want people to hear this.
Man, the Dell, the Dell no, the Dell no happy as hell. But they, 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 they wanted us to talk. Yeah, they wanted me to talk. The Dell no want me to talk.
Whatever you say.
Whatever, whatever I was going to say. They ain't want me to say. They wanted me to say. They knew, they knew I was coming for her. They knew I was going for her. I ain't going for her.
I wanted to get a good thing.
The other bitch that... Yeah, we shut it down. One of those in the chair going, "Look," and we was...
So, this was after the meeting, they went home to record this, and you hear them say my name. You hear them who was happy. They recorded themselves on social media, on Instagram and Facebook. It is my goal every meeting to work and to do the work. And I do the work, I show up, but not at the risk of my life, I'm not doing that. When they failed to enforce the disorderly conduct, and they did, all the sections that I gave you, it was dangerous for the public, for the residents who came to discuss their issues, it was dangerous for the city staff who sought shelter out the back door, the emergency exit, it was dangerous for our colleagues. Only people who did not move out their seats were the four who knew this was going to happen. This is a conspiracy to incite a riot. You heard it, the people that stated the Dell no were happy went home and made a video and put it on social media. This needs to be investigated. You cannot threaten an elected official, and especially, they're saying an elected official was the one who conspired with them to incite a riot. There has to be a public safety plan, and there has to be, there has to be accountability for those. Look at, we have another back there, they're back there, you know, saying stuff, just, just, and it's, how do we move Flint forward? One, you don't have to like someone to do your job. You don't. But what we have to do is do the business of the city. We should not have been, we, today, during this press conference, is when we were told that the clerk was calling to tell us about the public safety plan. That's just not true. If not, I got a bridge to sell you. That should have been done beforehand. Bullets don't have names. They don't. And this event was chaotic and it was dangerous. Calling us at 6 o'clock, when the meeting was scheduled at 5, to state, "Well, hey, I want to tell you about this safety plan." That's not even, it's not real, and it's a soundbite. I wish that this conference that they called would have been called to say, "We got to fix this. We have to come together as a city. We have to make sure that those people who come to speak to us," and we've all been called derogatory names and went through something, but the thing is, we tried, we're here to work to fix the problems. I'm not going to, I don't want to risk the public. I stood next to a lady in that stairwell who couldn't walk, had a walker, 86 years old. We failed the residents. We have a disorderly conduct, and it's a very strong disorderly conduct. Liddell Lewis failed to enforce it. She failed to enforce the disorderly conduct. She failed the residents, she failed the city staff, she failed her workers. She failed us. She failed us. And that should have never happened. It was dangerous. And those individuals, I don't, and then let's go back to protocol. When you have a situation like that, each person, I know, no, that's fine, each person should have been, a statement should have been taken. No statements were taken that evening from the people who were in here. And their statements should have been taken before they left. They should have been named, they should have been detained, and some should have been arrested. We've seen people get arrested. That night of the city council insurrection, there were no arrests, there were no statements taken during this meeting. People were allowed to leave except for the one person who had to defend herself because of a threat, an imminent threat of her life. Protocols were not followed, and that's what we ended up with, with something that was dangerous.